All right, next, we're going to move on to our 6.6 item, 10 a.m. Consideration of a Presentation from Nielsen Merksamer on the 2024 Legislative Session, State Budget, and Potential Bills of Interest. Deeply apologize if I butchered that last name.
Good morning, Supervisors. Matthew Rothstein, Chief Deputy County Administrative Officer. As you are aware, Nielsen Merksamer serves as Lake County's Advocates in Sacramento, and I'm pleased to introduce Jeff Neal from Nielsen Merksamer, who will present a report on the first months of the 2024 Legislative Session. This presentation will highlight some of the 2,000-plus bills introduced since January and other state-level matters with relevance to your Board's 2024 legislative priorities, which you adopted during your January '23-2024 Governance Workshop. Mr. Neal?
Thank you, Matthew. Good morning. Thanks for taking a few minutes and allowing me the honor of coming up and addressing you today. I'm Jeff Neal, Senior Legislative Advocate at Nielsen Merksamer. There are actually several other last names in the name, too. We just don't even bother with them. Happy to be here to talk to you about the legislative session so far. I work together with my colleague, Michelle Rubikava, partner at Nielsen Merksamer. She couldn't be here today because the Legislature is in session, and we have a number of bills that we're supporting in committee today. So she's doing that, and I get to come up here. We can go on to the next. And one more. So we are -- just take one moment to talk about the firm. We are a diverse firm. We've been around since the 1970s, represent a number of local agencies, including several other counties, but we don't just do public agencies. We have a number of other clients as well, associations, private businesses, and because of that, we're able to maintain a broad set of relationships in the Legislature, both parties, you know, the moderate Dems, the Republicans, the progressive Democrats. And because of our backgrounds, Michelle, most recently since Nielsen Merksamer at the County of Los Angeles, she worked for the Medical Association as their attorney. I worked at CSAC for many years, so we're able to bring our experience to work for you now. Next slide. So the Legislature right now, of course, will have an election in November, as we know, is strongly tilted in favor of the Democrats. Both the Senate and the Assembly have several more Democrats than even a supermajority, and this matters because the -- whereas once, the Democrats needed to convince a couple of Republicans in order to do any of the things that require a supermajority vote, now it's the moderate Democrats who have that place. So the Republicans in Sacramento, anyway, are, you know, not as involved as they were even just a few election cycles ago, and it really is the Democrats' game. We do have two new leaders in the Legislature, both of them within the last year. Senator Mike McGuire, of course, is the Senate President pro tem, and Robert Rivas from Salinas or from Hollister, moved between the two, I think, as the Assembly Speaker. This is the first time, anyone knows of, in memory or in records, that the leaders have both been from more rural areas of the state. You know, we're all interested to see how that plays out, especially, you know, with Senator McGuire, his focus on wildfires over the last several years. We're hoping we'll bring some increased attention to those matters. Speaker Rivas grew up in a farming family, you know, grew up in the fields with his parents, and so really a different mindset than, you know, if they're just from San Francisco or Los Angeles. And the Legislature's priorities are up there. A lot of focus on housing and homelessness the last couple of years. That will continue. The bonds, potential bonds, are a big source of interest this year, as well as retail theft, which, of course, became a big issue last year, and they're focusing their attention more on it this year. Water, and then the behavioral and mental health issues that, of course, were recently on the ballot. Next slide. Proposition 1 is one of the big items for counties, of course, from the ballot, still hanging on by a thread. The opponents conceded last week, but you can't concede a ballot measure. It's not a -- you can't give up the race, and it continues to be, I think, closer than most people thought. This 50.4% is outdated. Last time I looked yesterday, it was at 50.1. It's only leading by about 20,000 votes. The governor put off his State of the State address, which was scheduled originally for yesterday, and most people believe it was because of the fate of Prop 1 hangs in the balance here, the number of ballots left to count across the state. A lot of us thought it was going to start pulling away after election night, as the late ballots were counted, and that has not happened at all. It's, in fact, gotten even tighter. But there's a lot of change coming to the Legislature. Between the last election cycle and this one, after November, I guess, starting in December, we'll have almost half of all the Legislature will have changed over just across two elections. It's partly because of the timing. The new term limits were put in place 12 years ago, and that's the new term limit. So a lot of those folks are changing out. It's not really half of the Legislature, because several of those new senators are coming from the Assembly, but it still changes that body considerably. And in fact, if sort of the common wisdom holds about who will win in many of those elections, one of the Houses, the Senate, will actually have a majority of women for the first time ever in California. It'll be 21 out of the 40 senators will be women, and the two bodies together will actually be closer to parity than California has been before. Next slide. So the biggest piece, you know, what's really controlling the conversation in Sacramento is the massive budget deficit. After a couple of years of massive surpluses, one of which didn't actually exist, but we didn't know that because of the -- when they did the last budget, they didn't actually know how much money the state was going to have. They had less of an idea than they usually do because of the IRS deadline moving from April to the fall. So this $73 billion budget deficit is really three years of deficit rolled into one. Two of the years weren't known about before because of that filing delay by the IRS, that the IRS decided, and of course, California followed suit for the state's income tax deadline. And so the governor's January budget proposals included significant cuts, large reductions to K through 12, in fact, K through 14 education, a lot of cuts to housing programs, which I think surprised some folks, given the governor's focus on housing programs over the last few years, and really significant both cuts and deferrals to climate and resource programs. Some of those are cuts and delays, and some of them are really moving what's currently in the general fund to be funded from other sources, like the Greenhouse Gas Reduction But last week, after this presentation was finalized, the Senate released their plans for their early action, and save a little bit more money by acting before June. They're proposing to adopt many of the governor's least painful proposals, including taking some money from the State Rainy Day Fund, as well as borrowing from the MCO tax for part of the general fund, a number of the cuts and deferrals that are, like I said, the least painful, some deferrals to UCCSU, and they're trying to get agreement this week. The governor's all for it. Most of them are his proposals, anyway. Didn't come out and exactly say that, but he's given that indication, and it really puts the ball in the Assembly's court and how they want to deal with it. They have to pass at least the updated MCO tax by the -- essentially by the end of this week. Next week is the Legislature's spring break, and that MCO tax needs to be changed because of some federal deadlines that are coming up. So the rest of it, they'd like to pass no later than the week after that, so they can get some of the savings from the current fiscal year before the budget year and have a little bit less to deal with in June. So by there, Matthew, you know, there was a bit of a disagreement over the size of the deficit. The LAO Legislative Analyst Office now says $73 billion because the January revenues came in poorly as well. The governor's, you know, estimate was a little bit lower than that, partly because he was figuring in the K through 12 reductions. And so, but passing this would be about the Senate's early action plan is about $29 billion, including the Rainy Day Fund, which is almost half of that. And so that would reduce the number they have to deal with in June, but it would put off most of the most difficult cuts. We can go to the next slide, where we can see some of the more difficult cuts, for counties, anyway. A number of cuts to Cal Works are proposed. The single allocation is a direct cut to county administration for Cal Works. It would be an ongoing cut into future years. The Family Stabilization Program, the Expanded Subsidized Employment, these are obviously programs that the county runs on behalf of the state and federal government, and they'd be cut and/or eliminated, along with the Family Urgent Response System. Counties are coming out fairly strongly against these proposed cuts because of the impact on the county and, of course, on all the people you serve. For SB 678 grants, these are grants that go to the probation. They're incentive grants to, you know, try and prevent people from recidivating and going back to prison. They've been frozen for the last few years as the effects of the -- one of the effects of the pandemic was a lot of changes in folks being recidivated, and the state is now saying that a lot of those effects have passed. Things are pretty much back to normal, and they recommend unfreezing the SB 678 formula, going back to the year annual data to change it, which will result in reductions for a lot of counties. There's also a third year of grant funding for the Public Defender's Offices for resentencing grants that they're proposing to pull back, the third year of funding, which would be for next year, also a direct cut to counties. And then cuts to Cal Homes and a number of other housing programs that local agencies are able to take advantage of. And next slide, we'll look at Lake County's priorities. I don't need to spend too long on this. You guys, you are the ones who adopted them, but just as we go into some of the bills of interest, to review them real quickly, the water reliability, obviously, the wildfire resilience and vegetation management. Not a lot of bills yet on Lake Pillsbury, but, you know, we're trying to get some of those conversations going. Housing, homelessness, economic development, and the opioid fatality crisis that the state's facing are all items that were on your priority list. We can go to the next slide and look at -- start looking at some of the bills that are out there that might be of interest. The first two are the bonds. These were talked about a lot last year. They're still being talked about a lot this year. One of the things that's affecting the calculus on these bonds is, you know, one, what's the right size? That's been the question the whole time. A lot of folks in the Legislature are definitely interested in putting some kind of resources, climate, forest, wildfire, water bond, all of those things in one or several of those things in a bond. The tight race for Prop 1 has got people talking quite a bit about the voters' appetite for bonds. Polling remains good for some kind of resources, climate, water, fire bond. And so there's a lot of people in Sacramento trying to figure out if the close vote for Prop 1 is because of the governor or if it's because of the MHSA changes that were paired with it or what. But for now, the bonds that are in print since last year are about $15 or $16 billion. They put the bulk of that money into drought, flood, and water, about a third of it. The next big chunk is for forest management, wildfire resilience and mitigation, and then clean energy, coastal protection, a lot of biodiversity and nature-based solutions for climate change, extreme heat. They start to differ a little as they get down to the smaller amounts. One of the conversations that's going on between the Senate and the Assembly as they work on these proposals is, should they be large, general pots of money that allow the state to then give grants as projects come in, or should they have specific earmarks in them for specific projects? And then, of course, there's all the middle ground in between that. How specific do you get when you're saying what the money is eligible for? Specifically say it's for dead trees, for, you know, vegetation management near power lines, or do you say it's for wildfire prevention and forest management of all kinds, or something in between? So that'll be a significant discussion all year this year. They have approximately until the end of June to put -- for the Legislature to put things on the ballot. They can push that deadline, but your county registrar would not be a fan of them doing that. I think the latest anything was ever put on the ballot was late, mid to late September. The registrars were not happy, rightfully so. It's a lot of printing costs that that puts off. Let's go on to the next slide. Two, really, two slides left here. Just wanted to talk about a few bills that do either address your priorities or have a direct, significant impact on -- potential impact on counties. The first slide here is really just for wildfire bills. There are a couple of bills about wildfire projects that are near roadways. This bill by Assemblymember Fong is one of them. It would be a sequo exemption for wildfire prevention within 50 feet of a road. AB 3150 by Assemblymember Sharon Quirk Silva would, you know, is about the high -- the fire hazard severity zone maps. There'd be an opportunity for more public review. There would be an opportunity for people to petition for a redesignation for those fire hazard severity zone maps. SB 1003 by Senator Dodd, you know, has to do with those vegetation management plans by the investor-owned utilities, and it would require them to make sure that they're paying attention to, that they're emphasizing how quickly those, their plans can be put into action and making, trying to get them to do it in the quickest amount of time possible. Important to note that all of these bills are essentially in their first form. As we go through the legislative process, go through policy committees, they hear from stakeholders, both opponents and supporters. These bills are all likely to change, sometimes fairly significantly. One that didn't make it on here because it wasn't in print when we were making this last week was SB 946 by Senator McGuire. It's a bill that would affect really just three counties in the state, including Lake County. There were some home hardening grants. There's a pilot program, San Diego, Lake County, and I believe Shasta County are the three pilot counties. This bill would say that those home hardening grants are not taxable as personal income because, unfortunately, they are currently, and that really mitigates the benefit of it when you get some grants to make your home safer from fires, and then you get a tax bill for a couple thousand dollars. That's a, that's pretty tough. So that one was just amended late last week. Wanted to mention that one. And then the last substantive slide, just about some bills on other topics. AB 2871 would allow counties to create overdose fatality review teams. This is to deal with the overdose crisis in the state. I think 11,000-plus people in California died last year of overdose fatalities, double what it was just a few years ago, and that was double what it was just a few years before that. Is a permissive bill that's modeled on the review teams that counties have for other types of deaths, where it allows different departments and some outside stakeholders, too, who are appointed to the review teams, to share what would otherwise be confidential information, medical information, just within the team, so they can figure out, make recommendations about what the county can do to try and bring those fatalities down. AB 817, which I believe Lake County supported last year, is in support of, is moving through the process this year. There was a change in the chair of a key committee and eased the passage a little bit, so that got through its policy committee in January and obviously have to do with remote participation with Brown Act meetings, making that a little easier. AB 2514 exempts counties under 70,000 population from the organics diversion targets. I believe that's a RCRC-sponsored bill to help deal with that difficult timeline under that bill, under 1383. And then the last one is an employment bill. AB 2561 by Assemblymember McKinner say that if counties or any public agency has bargaining units where the vacancy rates are above 10%, which, from conversations I've had with counties, are pretty much every county, that the county has to meet and confer, create a plan to fill all the vacancies, all of the vacancies, within six months, and then implement that plan in those six months. I think this is an example of a bill that will change considerably as it moves through the process, if it moves through the process, because it would have an extraordinary effect, I think. I think it would be very difficult to implement. Might have unintended consequences that the author doesn't intend.
Why did they pick 10%?
That's a fantastic question. Maybe so that they would catch everyone up in it. It's a possibility, because maybe it's different for some smaller cities, but I think for, I mean, there are some types of positions that for counties, you're never going to have full, essentially, at least in the current employment environment. I know for a lot of counties, it's very difficult to fill deputy sheriff positions. You know, you get into some of the jail medical types of positions, you know, nurses and whatnot, especially psychiatric positions, and then especially in jail. I mean, those are all very difficult positions to fill. There aren't enough mental health and behavioral health professionals in the state right now for anyone, private or public, at any level of government, to hire. So I think some of those are, I think there are a lot of conversations that public agencies can have with the author, and, you know, you start in one place, you know you're going to negotiate, you know, you hope to get, so maybe it's just a strong position, a strong negotiating position to start from.
Let us know how we can be helpful in that, because we would love to have 10% vacancies.
Yeah, right, yeah. Yeah, a lot of counties I've talked to have 20, 25, even 30% plus vacancy rates, which is tough. And, you know, what are you gonna, what are you gonna do? I would be interested to see what goes into the implementation plans, because I think a lot of counties would love to have some of those solutions that are doable and reasonable presented to them so that they could implement them. So I think the last slide is just a thank you for giving me the opportunity to come up and talk to you this morning. Happy to talk about any other, you know, state policy items. Happy to be working with you. It's been great working with your administration team and, of course, talking to all of you about your priorities going into this year.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation, and thank you for those private conversations as well, just to be able to initiate this process. Any -- Vice Chair Crandall.
Do you have any information if they're moving or looking at reforming anything to do with AB 1054?
On, from which year?
Let's see here. I'll find it. It's right here. It's from the fire victims. I have the information right here, so let me pull it up. Yes, it was a bill that was created, I want to say.
This was the one after the sulfur fire in 2017?
2017, 2018. This bill and this funding was put together because of the victims. However, the victims aren't, don't have the opportunity to access it as of now, so they're looking to see if there's anyone that's going to push or reform it so that they can access that funding and be made whole again. So, yeah, I was gonna, I'm meeting with others to get more information on this and also talk with RCRC to see what they have going.
That's a, that's a great, that's a great question. Let me look into it. I haven't heard about anything yet, but I do know that, as I said, Senator McGuire in his new position is hopefully going to bring some more focus to some of these items. I do think that the bill that I mentioned that wasn't on the list, SB 946, is another important county bill that's SB 964, so it all gets a little confusing, but SB 946, I think, will expand, from what we've heard, beyond just the home hardening income tax exemption, you know, so maybe it will include some other items like this, either about fire victims or about community hardening, home hardening. Let me look into that, and we'll get back to you.
Thank you for that question. Anything further? Supervisor Green?
Just a question more than a comment. I didn't see any cannabis bills in there. This is a cannabis-regulating county, and on occasion, we get questions from our growers and concerns that may track closer with the state regulations and the Department of Cannabis Control, the state excise tax and what have you. So I know this board has not previously signaled that we would like to do at least some minor tracking of cannabis bills, but if we're going to be serious about supporting our local growers, we have to not only take ownership of our local regulations, and we're well along a process where we're going to be redoing our local ordinance, but there are much bigger issues at play at the state level that I don't necessarily know our local grower base has a full appreciation of, and I know I don't have a full appreciation of, just because we haven't had the opportunity to talk in a venue like this and say, there's a lot going on. And I know Senator McGuire in his new position represents not just Lake County, but several cannabis-producing counties. So I don't want to put a whole new division on you or expectations, certainly not with the consensus of the board, but I'm personally interested in tracking cannabis legislation. There's a lot going on at the state level that can benefit our local growers.
There is, and that's been a fairly active area for a lot of legislation the last two or three years. There are a lot fewer bills introduced this year on it. I think there's a lot going on at the agency level, right, at the department level. My sense is that the Legislature feels like they've done what they were going to do. There could still be a couple of bills that pass, for sure, but it seems to be less of an emphasis now than it has been for the last couple of years, but we will be sure to keep an eye on it. In fact, I realized when I walked into the room, you know, the memories hit, and the last time, I believe it was the last time I was here, I was at CSAC at the time, it was a number of years ago, was when the first cannabis ordinances were first being proposed, and the room was considerably fuller. Then it was the first public hearing in front of the board of the first set of cannabis regulations for the county, and it was packed in here. It was raucous. It was a good time. So, anyway, I will keep, I'll keep an eye out for it and let you know if we see anything that...
I think 820 is doing pretty good. It passed 36-0 in January as well, and that has to do with the Senate Bill 820 has to do with seizure of property provisions currently applicable to unlicensed manufacturing. It's based off of the moonshining situation for unlicensed commercial cannabis activities. That's one of them, but I don't, I know you're referring to more like regulation with cannabis, but this is illicit grows and things like that. So it's still moving along. It's sponsored by RCRC, too.
Yeah, that's good, and the illegal grows have been an area of increasing interest, you know, a lot of, it affects a lot of other areas, right? It affects water. It affects some of the, some of the violence issues in some counties in particular, you know, it affects the environmental issues as well because of the unlicensed grows used.
I always say it's the dark cloud that we can't even gather any data on, but we know it's contributing to a lot of our issues throughout the state and in our local governments as well. So, yeah, it's, to get control over this would be really helpful. I also asked state representatives and even the governor, like, activate the National Guard to help with this. I mean, like...
Yeah, and I know former CSAC president from Riverside County had this as, you know, was something, Chuck Washington, was something that he brought up quite a bit during his presidency, because they have a big issue with it in Riverside County as well. They don't have a big lake in Riverside County, and they, you know, a lot of canyons with chaparral that people are doing this in, so he was able to push that quite a bit. Good to see that it passed in January, you know, as the second year of a two-year session. Any bill that didn't make it out of the first House in the first year, it has that end-of-January deadline to do so, or it's dead for the two-year session. So, you know, with the leaders changing, a lot of the chairs changing, I mentioned it with AB 817, I think more two-year bills passed out of committee in January this year than do most years because of some of those committee changes.
What about insurance?
Yeah, and it's a tough one, because you both, right? We want, we want everybody to have it, and we want everybody to be able to afford it. It's tough to force the insurers to stay in the state, right? And it's, you know, we have people now who feel like they live in an urban area, who are... they live in an urban area, who are being canceled, right, by their insurance companies. Harder, you know, in a, in a not fire-prone area, they, they feel that way. It's harder in the, in areas that are more prone to wildfires. The insurance commissioner is taking a while to make some of the changes, but the, it, it doesn't seem that there's a way to change the system that meets all three of those requirements, right? Because the, the, the safe plan has extremely low liquidity right now with extremely high liabilities. And so they need to figure out a way to both, you know, there was supposed to be the insurer of last, or, you guys know this better than I do, Last Resort, it has far more policies on it now than it was ever designed for. And it, you know, there was a hearing, I think it was last week, maybe it was the week before, where they talked about how much money they have to cover those liabilities, and it is not a sufficient amount of money. And, and in addition to that, we need to bring even more people onto the plan. You know, there are bills to require the plan to bring on, you know, what I would call multifamily, mostly condominium developments, to allow them to bring on commercial, commercial policy holders. All those things will increase the liabilities. Hopefully, it can also increase the, the amount they have to cover those liabilities. But, you know, you have to raise the rates or the insurers won't stay. You have, if you bring down the price rate, all, all three of those things pull against each other. So I think there, it's an area, maybe one of those rare areas where there's a lot of focus, but very, very few actual bills, because there's, you know, on some of the things, homelessness, housing, there's a thousand ideas about what we can do to make it better, right, or to change it in ways that would, that would maybe help a little bit or, or get out of the way at least. And this is an area where it's, it's, we just need one solution, but I don't think anybody now quite knows how to, how to get there. So the insurance commissioner has, you know, started to make some changes to the, to the fair plan, but it's going to be a tough, it's going to be a tough go.
And how, the offloading isn't going very well either.
No.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any further comments, questions? So I do have one thing that's not on here, and maybe I'm asking you to look in a crystal ball. I believe that we have been told, I don't know if it's from the governor's office or LAO, that we should be anticipating multiple years of deficits, not just this single year. Do you have any more information that you can provide as to what is being projected for the state to help us better prepare? I mean, this is great that you're looking at the bills and those things that could change, but the finances, when we're doing our budgets and preparing, is also very helpful. Do you have any further information on where we stand and how that's being projected at this moment in time?
Yes, for the state anyway, and the ways that it might, that it might trickle down. You're right that it's a, it's a multi-year problem, and it's not one that will go away on its own. It's at this point a permanent structural deficit. So while the 73 billion or 58 billion, or whichever the numbers you want to take, as I said, those represent kind of a three-year budget problem because of the IRS delay in the deadline for filing taxes, but that, it's not three years, it's three years up to now. Going forward, about 24 to maybe on the high end, 30 billion is an ongoing deficit. So they both need to make one-time cuts, which are the easier ones to make. Those are some of their deferrals and, and whatnot that they're proposing, but they do need to find 20 to 30 billion dollars in, in permanent solutions. You know, the way that Prop 98 works for school funding, some of that is close to automatic when the state's general fund changes. Not to say that schools won't ask for those cuts not to be made, or at least to be, to be mitigated, but Prop 98 provides a minimum guarantee for that funding, and the minimum goes up and down depending on the state's general fund performance. So that's, but that still leaves tens of billions of dollars to deal with. I think we do know from experience that that tends to trickle down in the way that the, the revenues don't always, when the revenues are high, that the deficits do tend to. And that's where we saw some of the, some of the cut proposals, right, to the single allocation for CalWorks, to, you know, some of the deferrals for some of the bridge housing programs or other housing programs. We know that HAP is, does not, you know, is, is a one-year at a time. It's not a permanent for the, for the homelessness grants from the state, and, you know, there's no proposal to make them permanent. I think it's entirely possible that those are significantly reduced or, or go away. Those are almost the easy ones to do because they're not in law in future years, right? You just stop, stop funding it. So I do think the counties in particular, because of our close fiscal and program relationship with the state, should prepare for lower amounts of money from the state to, to perform, even the programs that the state requires, requires you to perform. You know, there is an effort underway right now between all the county associations, CSAC, RCRC, and the urban counties of California to try and reinvigorate the process for claiming mandates from the state. There's a, you know, when the state tells any local agencies they have to do something and they don't provide revenue to do so, or fee authority, while there are a lot of exceptions to it, I want to be real upfront about that, there are a lot of exceptions to it, it is still in the Constitution that they have to provide the reimbursement. In, under the last administration, under Governor Brown's administration, they kept that requirement top of mind and tried to pass policies in a way that didn't mandate that counties do things, or that when they did, they came with funding attached. I do think that the current administration has not been as focused on, on that. There have been a lot of, a lot more mandates that have come down, many of them with insufficient funding or none, and so I think that has sparked an interest in trying to get some of those things funded, the Commission on State Mandates. I mentioned that, that's not this, that's not the whole solution. It's not going to make county budgets whole. It's just, it is one thing that we're starting to look at, you know, as your representatives in Sacramento, about how to at least help on some of these areas. So that might address, for example, Care Court is one of the big ones that's, that's coming down. See, the cohort one counties have already implemented it. There's going to be some expenses with that, that, that the, that the state isn't providing enough money to cover all of the expenses. They're providing parts of it, but not all of it. I think there are some other issues like that where, where the mandates can be helpful, but I, I do think that, you know, obviously, we will continue to resist some of the, the cuts that will affect counties most acutely, but, and those are some of the things that will, we will keep an eye out for and let you guys know about, so you can tell us which ones we should spend most of our time and effort trying to change their minds about. But, you know, I was, I was at CSAC and that whole decade of, of the 2000s to 2010, there were deficits just about every year at the state level, and it, they seemed to get bigger and bigger every year as we went. State policy was a lot different back then. It was a lot harder for the state to pass a budget. That didn't help, but those are, those are very difficult years, and I think we might be in for, for a couple of those here coming up.
Thank you very much. Anything further? Michael, did I cut you off on something you would say?
Just wanted to thank you for the good times reference to the full room we had back then. There were times. They weren't always good.
I was wondering if Supervisor Simon felt the same.
Yeah.
Let's open it up for, oh, open it up for public comment. I see we have one hand up, Betsy Khan. And I'll get to you in a second, just pointing to you saying I saw you.
Mr. Chair, am I allowed to speak now?
Yes, please. Sorry about that.
Oh, thank you. I was confused by your last statement. Our, many rural counties, almost all rural counties, are profoundly impacted by the exportation of medical care, where our hospitals are not providing local surgery and in-house services, and that impacts our fire protection districts because they are the ones who provide the inter-facility transfers and ambulance services. They no longer have that ability to do that, and Lake County is, is putting a significant pinch on the levels of service, and I wonder if there's any area of legislation that is working on addressing those issues for us.
Thank you for your comment. Would you be able to answer if there is such legislation that is looking at that?
I can't think of any offhand. There's certainly a lot about healthcare generally. I think the issue that I've heard about the most among, I mean, there's a lot of focus on the behavioral health and mental health care, of course. I actually think most closely related to, to the, the public comment there is a lot of focus, although no bills that I know of right now, on the maternity wards that are closing all around the state. I think something like 24 in the last four years and another 24 in the, in the, or more 30 in the several years before that, but not, but not to the general or acute care generally. There was the legislation that passed last year that created a $700 million fund for hospitals, public hospitals that had, not just public, sorry, that had either recently closed or were in danger of closing. State got that out fairly quickly and got, got most of that money out to hospitals that were identified as, as that. I mean, there's a lot of, there are a lot of pressures on, on the hospital, I guess, industry right now, financial pressures in particular, partly because of COVID, partly COVID just exacerbated some of the existing ones. So sorry, I don't know of legislation on that specific topic, but hopefully the money they passed last year helped some of those stay open and we'll continue to look for it.
Okay. And then as, also as a response, I know that the Health Steering Committee that I'm a part of, NACO, did pass a resolution to increase reimbursement rates to EMS transport, and so that one is kind of seeking a congressional individual that might take interest in taking on this bill, and NACO staff would be working with them, and so I'm following that. I actually co-sponsored that, and so I, I would like to see that happen, and that could be potential change coming from the federal level that impacts Medicaid, which would trickle down and impact all the way down to the state of California. May not be the, the one piece that needs to happen to solve the problem, but it's definitely a piece of the problem, and hopefully that will go through. I saw a hand in the room. Please come on up to the podium.
John Moss, I survived the Valley Fire, and I'm curious about the home hardening grant, where people get FEMA grants to harden their homes against fire. What I want to know is if the grants are, need to be paid back. I was to sit in line and waited and listened to the lady, and she said, well, you know, if you get a grant, you ultimately have to pay it back.
And so I appreciate the public comment, but that would be a question directed towards CalOES and the group that is working on that. This is not necessarily going to be the appropriate venue for that question at this moment in time, unless Supervisor Pisgah, I know you're heavily involved in that, unless you feel otherwise.
The pilot area is the Kelseyville Riviera, and so that's the only area where this program is...
You don't know if, if you have to pay your FEMA grant back?
You don't have to pay it back. It's, it's a grant. It's not a loan.
It was then too.
No, I, I think we're talking about different programs, but the home hardening that's going on right now is only in the Kelseyville Riviera.
It was, it was FEMA, as I understand. I want to ask a second question. I have recently been out of, out of commission, but I want to know if California is operating its government at a deficit at this point.
And I, I believe that we just stated that we are in a deficit. That number depends on who you talk to. Could be as high as 78 billion, or it could be as low as 53 billion. But at this moment, it's, it's a matter of how much money is being paid in taxes and how much they are collecting in order to say whether they're working in a deficit or not. We are definitely in a deficit year, and, and Mr. Neal...
California as a state.
If you want to add to that, Mr. Neal.
Just make one quick comment through the chair, that there is a provision in the California Constitution that requires a balanced budget. Unlike the federal government, the state cannot carry a deficit across fiscal, the budget, for any given fiscal year has to be balanced.
Gotcha.
So the deficit requires, that's why we have to fix the deficit instead of just acknowledging it and moving on.
So that's your answer. Thank you very much for the questions, and thank you, Mr. Neal, for helping me out. I see no further hands up in the chamber or in the Zoom room, and so that will complete this item. Thank you very much for your presentation and for looking out for our priorities at the state.
Appreciate it. Thank you.